We'll call the order of the work session for the County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, April 30th, we're meeting in the Supervisor Hearing Room in Melody Lane, ARS 38431.02H. The public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board may attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. The public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Roll call. Rosemary, is your District Two?
Gomez is here.
District Three, Antonio is here. All supervisors are present and in person. I will go to Ms. Gilman to kick us off.
So, thank you. This is our Finance Department, which also covers procurement. We have with us today Monica Miranda, the Director of our Finance Department, and Sasha Dwyer, the Deputy Director of Finance. And they prepared a presentation to provide the Board with an overview of their department's staff and primary functions, as well as outlining their funding requests that will help us achieve our strategic goals in the future if they should be funded by the Board. So, take it away, Monica.
Monica, morning.
Monica, morning.
Good afternoon.
The Finance Department budget is a fairly small-sized department in the general fund compared to the others in the county. Our 2025 salary budget totaled $1,148,380, which includes wages and benefits, and our operational budget totaled $247,451. For FY26, we're requesting an increase of our O&amp;M of approximately $50,400, and that takes into account our funding request for the Certified CPA Auditing Firm to assist with the annual comprehensive financial report, or our ACFER, and the annual expenditure limitation report, or AEL, audit reconciliation, review, and financial consulting services. And like I said, we'll be discussing those in one of the upcoming slides. So, that would bring our O&amp;M total up to $247,451. The procurement, 2025 salary budget totaled $248,239 for wages and benefits, and their operations and maintenance budget totaled $53,025. And at this time, we're not requesting any changes to that for FY26. The function of finance is to internally support the Board of Supervisors, county administration, and all the county departments, and ultimately, the public in a fiscal steward capacity to ensure financial transparency and financial reporting. Our services include maintaining timely, accurate, comprehensive financial transaction records, establish and maintain adequate system of internal controls to protect county assets, provide timely, comprehensive, well-designed annual and interim financial reports, process invoices for payments, bi-weekly payroll, prepare federal and state financial reports, purchase goods and services per state statutes and county procurement policies, coordinating the annual county's financial statements and the audit, provide county departments with financial and policy information support, assist other county departments with financial analysis, and promote financial accuracy, accountability, and compliance with applicable policies, procedures, laws, and regulations. We are comprised of several divisions within finance, always provide valuable and crucial services to county operations. These are our General Accounting Division, which includes revenue management, expense management, capital asset management, financial system. Our current system is New World, and that is processing user access requests and troubleshooting in cooperation with IT, because IT also has a section that does that as well, and as well as financial reporting. We process accounts payable, which includes all AP batches, and we issue warrants for county departments, process the P-card monthly payment to the bank, and travel claim, et cetera. We also process payroll, our bi-weekly county employee payroll and benefit payments to the vendors. We also have a Grants Administration Department, which does the financial preparation, reporting, and reconciliations of the schedule of expenditures, the federal awards, our CIFA, for the annual audit, and they also review department requests for reimbursements to grantors, and we ensure that our departments are compliant with grant agreements.
Holy cow.
We do procurement. On the procurement side, which is contracts administration, they're also the purchasing card, P-card administrator, and we also do property management of all our capital assets.
Do you control all the properties?
We manage it, yes. We are comprised of 13 full-time staff in finance and three staff in procurement. Myself, the Finance Director, we have our Deputy Director. In our General Accounting, we have the Accounting Manager, who's the one who is in charge of managing the TROX system for finance. She processes all of our user requests for access. She does change of supervision for our ADP payroll system. She troubleshoots. She does trainings to all departments that utilize New World to show them, you know, how to manage and navigate around it. We have our Accountant Three, who assists with the audit. She also does budget. She enters in the budget amendments for the Budget Manager. She works with her on that aspect. She helps with capital assets. She is generally my go-to person for extraordinary finance accounting items that I need assistance with. We have our Accountant Two for the Revenue, who books and handles all of the incoming revenue that's processed through the Treasurers Department that's rolled into New World so we can book it into the general ledger, and she does our cash reconciliations at the end of the year for the audit. And then we have our Accountant Two that does our expenditure, our expense journal entries, and she manages the capital assets, New World side of it. For accounts payable, we have two accounting techs. One is currently vacant, and they are responsible for processing and reviewing all of the batches that are going through the weekly. They review the P-card transactions, the monthly P-card transactions, as well as process the travel reimbursement claims. Our payroll staff, we have two accountant ones. One of the positions is currently on a special work assignment, filling in for Stacy's vacated Accountant Two in the Revenue, and they process all of the payroll, all the vendor payments, process PSPRS submittals, ASRS submittals, EORP and corp. And then we have our Grants Administration Division that has our Grants Administrator, and he oversees two grants analysts that are responsible for reviewing and reconciling and ensuring compliance of grants for all the departments. And then in procurement, we have Annie, who's our Contracts Administrator. We have Nicole, who is our buyer, and Cindy, who is our Property Manager. Since finance is such a small budget, I touched really on our bigger line items. Our books, dues, and subscriptions are for mainly the subscription or membership for five finance staff for the Government Finance Officer Association. They provide various trainings to us throughout the year. They offer any new GASB implementations, how to properly prepare the ACFER statements, or any type of financial trainings that we need. And that would be for the Finance Director, the Deputy Finance Director, our Accountant Three, our Grants Administrator, and our Accounting Manager. And then it also, we purchase our annual governmental financial accounting, auditing, and financial reporting Blue Book. That's a subscription that we have, and it gets refreshed every year. Our 421 Professional Services line is where we pay our financial consultants. They assist us with any new GASB implementation, interpretation setups, give us guidance for our ACFER and any analysis on adjusting entries that we need to do and recommend best practices. We also have our MGT Consultants, which is a cost allocation report that we have to process every year, which looks up, you know, indirect costs, things like that for overhead. We also have an accounting and auditing line, which is exactly that. It's our Arizona Auditor General cost annually for the audit, and they audit our ACFER, our annual comprehensive financial report. They will audit our annual expenditure limit report and our landfill assurance report that we have to submit to ADQ every year. And then finally, we have our operating leases and rentals, and that is our Gravity software, which is the software that saved our lives two years ago for our ACFER and AELR preparation. They threw in the AELR for free. They formatted it for us and went all electronic. We were using spreadsheets to prepare our ACFER and our AELR. It was very time-consuming, so it saved us a great deal of time. They also have a GASB 87 and GASB 96 module that we utilize, and that is for our leases and our subscription-based agreements that we have to report on now. That started two years ago for the regular leases, and then the Sabitas, is what we call them, started last year. And then in procurement, the major line is the operating leases and rentals, which is the Bonfire software that Annie uses for contracts and So, our funding requests, our big ask is to contract out to have a Certified CPA Auditing Firm, prepare our ACFER Annual Expenditure Limitation Report, and also act as our financial consultant, which would include reviewing our reconciliations, just have that extra set of eyes to ensure that our reconciliations are accurate, any new GASB implementations that were, you know, giving us best practices to implement them correctly. And the main reason for the request is that we are, as you know, implementing a new ERP system. It's a major investment the county is taking on, and we need to ensure that it's set up correctly. And because preparing the ACFER is usually what I do from July through March, I work on audit. Those are the times that we're scheduled for this new ERP program to have all of our crucial trainings, our implementations, setups. We have 50, I want to say there's about 50 confirmed sessions, and some of them are all-day, all-week sessions that we need to be present for to ensure that the system is set up efficiently and correctly. So, that's one of the main reasons for the ask is to free up that time that is spent focusing on ACFER preparation, AELR preparation, so that we can focus on properly implementing the ERP. And it'll assist also with having them present during audit meetings, talking to the auditors, ensuring that, I mean, we have met all of our audit deadlines as far as requested items, but as far as presenting them with the completed ACFER so that they can hopefully get started in a more timely manner than, and we can meet our deadline for March 31st. And then also, the Gravity software, that is, this would be year four of the software, and that would be used in conjunction with the CPA. They would use that to look at history, historical ACFRs, get the data that they need, and also our GASB 87 and GASB 96 module.
Ms. Biananda, what page number is that says funding request? Do you have a page number for it? Funding request, if you don't have a page number.
Like, seven?
Oh, like your slide number?
Slide number seven?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then my next question was for the Chair. What did the Chair have in mind for review? You were talking about review with regard to probably the budget here not too long ago, and so Ms. Biananda has a cost for...
80K.
Yeah, well, she, ACFER, and it says 80 grand at the top of that. And so, how could we put this request? Because this is what we're talking about, transparency. We're checking on our own stuff.
Right, right.
So, what did you have in mind of it?
When I talked to him, he gave me an estimate of significantly higher than that.
I understand.
Yeah, it was like 280 to like 350K is what it was going to be. But he was going to go through the whole budget.
Well, for precisely what Ms. Biananda wanted to implement for 80 grand, or, you know, with the estimate, keep in mind, we're just asking.
Yeah, I think she's, correct me if I'm wrong, this is to comply with the Auditor General audit that we get. She's doing a prep to get everything lined up and getting help to make sure to help get through that process.
Right, to relieve her of the workload related to...
Right, right. Which I think is separate from bringing Randy Pollan into...
That's true, but it's a step in that direction and starting with a smaller...
Well, he would definitely work very closely to review all that stuff, but I don't know if it would have any overlap with what she's asking for. She's asking for help preparing specific reports for the Auditor General.
Yes, it's the Gravity software, and that is inclusive of the Gravity software. We have two companies we're talking to. The one, one of them would include, the cost would include using the Gravity software. So, it's the cost for the report plus the Gravity, but they would utilize that.
I don't know if it'd be...
So, what you're looking for was a...
It's a comprehensive...
It's not the Auditor General's audit, but you're looking for a...
It's a more detailed audit. It's a big, the Auditor General's audit is a cursory audit, basically, just to make sure that the ledger winds up right, that the money coming in matches the money coming out, and there's not some funny... I was going to ask, you know, I'm not saying it's Pollan, I just get, I had to throw it to who I was talking to. But I mean, it could be the guy that I was talking to at CSA, too, his firm, because he gave me his, I can't remember his name either.
Right.
We know another guy in Sierra Vista, Varga.
It would be something we would put out for bid, anyway.
Yeah, but yeah, that's what I'm saying. We put it off for bid. So, but it's just somebody that comes in and drills down one layer deeper than what I think we're looking for here to start analyzing, like I was saying earlier, overlaps, redundancies, you know, where you got multiple agencies doing the same thing, you know, or maybe, I know you're talking about you have a way to not allow splanting, but to where one guy's charging for radios and the other guy's charging for radios, or they're buying the same radios, or what. I'm just an example. I know that's probably not true, but I mean, so that's what they would be looking for.
It would be something that, say, look, you got these three departments using, doing a certain thing, and this one would be the best one to...
It could be, it could be. Yeah, it could be. It's just, it's just, it's just looking at, you know, the efficiencies and sort of the, not necessarily the compliance side, which is what she's going to try to get out of the 80Ks, to comply so that when it goes to the Auditor General, she doesn't get dinged, I think.
Well, I think when, when we had, I guess, the Health Department, we're talking about Health Department expenses in the jail, and then how, let's see, it was Raphael was telling us how easy it was to figure out, and we're sitting there going, oh, really?
Yeah.
And so, there might be some help that we could get from some...
Yeah, that's, you know, that's an example, too, right? Where you have, you know, we're seeing the Sheriff's budget, costs for mental health, and then we're seeing in the Health Department, but then you see, the state said, oh, there's a transfer here.
Right, with some of that...
You know...
I believe it all.
Yeah.
And it's just the way it's presented.
Yeah, it's just...
Okay, I understand.
We're just, we're just looking at, you know, down to what would be prior to going even lower to what would be the forensic level. It's like the in-between the Auditor General and the forensic audit level. It's one of these audits.
And the interesting, too, is you have a lot of people that I know, they're really diving deep into the jail district, you know, and where money is from 192 and over here.
Like, they don't understand where all this money's moving around.
And then that becomes your biggest credit.
Yeah.
So, if you make it more understandable how it's all there and one...
So, can we talk a little bit about the ERP and how finance is working on that enterprise resource? Right. We're working on setting up our chart of accounts to link to our financial statement reports. The way New World is set up, and I'm not sure, this could be pre-finance, prior finance directors who initially set it up, and, you know, who have left, and new ones came in, our accounts are kind of like jumping all over the place, and they don't roll necessarily into our government reporting module currently, which is why we went to Gravity. And we are trying to set up our chart of accounts to where somebody new coming in who has never been familiarized with our chart of accounts or our financial statements can make connections as far as, these are your public safety expenditure, you know, function, functional areas. These are your governmental, your general government, your health and welfare. These are your, you know, it categorizes all of these account codes to roll into the financial statements and makes it easier for somebody who's fairly new to come in and make the connections. That took me one, that was one of the longest things that I struggled with, was trying to figure out, okay, where are these accounts flowing into the statements? So, I'm trying to, we're trying to build it to where it would be easy for somebody coming in to be able to say, oh, this is the health and welfare. This is... But that's part of this new system that we're going to, with Tyler Technology. Yes, and also, it would give somebody coming in to do a review of our budgets, direct access to invoices, because they will be loaded into the system, to where he wants to see what is this warrant paying, clicks on the little clip, paperclip, and it pulls down the actual invoice rather than having to contact us and go and do a backup, trying to do a drill, journal entries that'll have all that backup associated with it.
Stacy, do you remember what program Raphael was using that he was saying was not the...
Yeah, he said there was a glitch, it's the glitch.
That's what we're replacing.
Okay, so, you said enterprise something or other?
ERP, that stands for Enterprise Resource Program. So, that's the program that Joe presented on, probably about a year ago, with, that we went out for bid on, and the Board approved.
And that was for payroll, I presume?
Not just payroll, but the whole financial ledger, which includes payroll, but also procurement. It would, a contract module to where we can track all our contracts, our leases. Payroll, it would include all the payroll. AP, revenue, we're trying to see if we can set it up to talk to trucks, rather than doing, it'll eliminate a lot, or the majority of our manual entries that we're having to do right now, to have electronic sweeps from the bank pulling in statements, or, you know, the P-card downloads directly from the vendor we use to download directly the P-card statements, rather than all manual entries, which do lead to, you know, human error. It would eliminate a lot of that.
Okay. Many times I've discussed with Mr. Casey that I'm not a big fan of technology, computers, and all that kind of stuff. So, everybody knows that, that's why. And so, I don't want to get in a situation where we're all, we're trying to get up to speed, we're trying to get all squared away with, with these five computer programs to all merge with each other, and 10 years from now, we're going to be looking back at now and say, you know, all of these are obsolete now, and we never did really get our ducks in a row, and now it's time to go on to do something else, and we're going to be like chronically behind because of technology.
And that's one of the reasons why the ask is because it will free me up to be able to do these crucial reconciliations, because as we're doing implementation, we have to reconcile to make sure, you know, that the historical data we're bringing in matches what is actually what we reported financially in our ACFRs. It'll help us do reconciliations to ensure that the system is talking to each other correctly. Right now, the majority of my time, honestly, is spent working on the audit, working on ACFER.
I understand.
Yeah. So, we need to be able, because it is such a big investment the county is doing, we need to make sure that our return on investment is maximized, I guess.
And it doesn't end like you were saying.
Right. So, and the goal is to eliminate, we have so many different systems right now, between ADP, New World, and...
Etime.
Etime, but the ADP has two within it, so, that don't talk to each other. So, there's lots of inefficiencies right now because of the number of systems we use.
How did that happen, Mr. Casey? That's a, that's a big history there.
Yeah, it's a long story. But we're, we're trying to bring it into with this new ERP. If we do it right, which is why it's so important to have our best people engaged to do it right, we won't be making fixes for five, 10, you know.
So, does Gravity...
Updates, but it won't...
Help, is the thing that helps you integrate everything?
Well, Gravity helps me prepare the ACFER. It is an electronic... And ACFER stands for? Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and they threw in the Annual Expenditure Limitation Report, which was also done on spreadsheets in the past. So, it...
First of all, it's called a CAFER.
Yes, yes. Well, they changed that. They just recently changed the acronym.
Same acronym. I know, everybody's got a different one.
But what we do is we take our trial balance and our budget performance reports, and we import them into Gravity, and it's mapped to all of our accounts to where, once we do the import, it flows, and the report is generated. It, like I said, two years ago, it was a great, great assistance, and it has been.
I got a procurement question. So, when you go out and you do all these routine contracts, are they time and material with negotiated fees? Is that what you guys do? Or are they fixed price?
I think they're primarily fixed price.
Fixed price?
Yeah.
So, for the service, though, is the service contracts, it's a period of time and a defined scope for a fixed price? Do you have a fee negotiation limitation that we have in the county? Like, 15%? Is it 20%? You go off of whatever the best pricing, and the guy can build in whatever fee he wants, as long as he... I wish I could do that. I can't do that. Federal government restricts me to 15% fee.
So, when we do, when we do the contracts, that comes up at the beginning, it's, you know, okay, 25% will be based on the technical side, 50% will be based on price, you know...
Well, the criteria for selection you're talking about, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
So, what I'm getting is like, when I do contracts, the government limits me to 15%.
Yeah.
You know, that's the most I could charge on, you know, they...
Yeah.
Does the county say for this type of contract, these capped at 15%? No, you just let them bid whatever they want, and then, you know, that's good. That's free market. I wish the federal government did that.
We had the Health Department and the Sheriff's Office have finance personnel that are not here in this building. Why is that so? And should the finance personnel from, well, how many other departments are there that have finance personnel that are not here?
We have several that have their own finance people to manage the financial aspects of each department individually. They will do accounts payable. They will do the, you know, oversee that payroll's done correctly, the P-card transaction log, grants. I know the Sheriff's Office, they have a great team that manages their grants. They do it very well. They're, they're very on top of it. And, and that's the need for it, is that we are not a centralized, centralized finance. It's, we are kind of like oversee the financial transactions, but each department should theoretically have their finance people or somebody who's experienced in finance handling the day-to-day of business, financial operations of each individual department. So, it eventually gets routed through to... That eventually routes over to us, yes.
Good. Is that good, or is it...
I, I think it's a very good checks and balance.
It's preferable to, because it seems like when they're doing all the remodeling, that the point of doing all the remodeling was to have centralized financial oversight, including more people here. And I don't know, I don't know how crowded your side is, but my side isn't crowded.
Yeah, no, we do recommend that they each have their individual, CCOM is a good example of somebody who has the financial knowledge and the wherewithal to be able to manage all of these invoices coming in to ensure that, you know, they're not getting charged something, because we, the way our checks and balances is, they will look at the invoice, they will sign off saying, yes, these charges are...
And you guys check it.
We verify it. We have to have that checks and balance for our auditors, you know, it's to ensure that the funds are being used appropriately.
I understand. So, my point is the physical presence of the people that are finance personnel, and you think it's preferable for them to not be here?
Yes. Yes, they, they're in the day-to-day, you know, they're there with the departments. They know the operations. We don't really know how departments operate, you know, and so we rely on their finance people to ensure that, you know, they're seeing operations, how it's working, facilities, finance staff.
I understand, but at the same time, oh, let's just, take off in just, just a minute, Sasha. By the same token, we're talking about a whole bunch of different computer programs, and it seems like the most likely cause of that is individual finance departments picking, well, we want this program, and that department wants that program.
I know that the departments, if they have an individualized software, it's usually for the purposes of their operations, like Facilities, for example, has their work order, and Fleet has their work order, you know, management software. Finance, we're all Finance, we're all New World. So the only, the only difference would be like if they're cash receiving, receiving cash, community development, I believe, has theirs or
Development services.
Development services.
Yeah, they have civic, civic plus.
Yeah, which is in conjunction with their operations, they use it to, you know, charge permit fees or, you know, receiving. And then they will take it to the treasures and deposit there. But for as far as AP batches, things like that, it's New World.
Sasha, you can go.
I just want, in regards to the individual departments, they sometimes, the larger departments have their own finance staff. They're kind of mediators between us, we're very focused on the accounting and then the reporting. They translate what we need to their department. Like the sheriff's finance section is the go-between between what finance needs from the command staff or the deputies, that kind of thing. So they have that subject matter experts in their department's operations, but they also funnel what we need to report for the county to us.
The cost benefit you're trying to get for this.
Yeah, not everybody has the level, the same level as, say, Raphael, the head of the sheriff's office. They're a different than influence and, and, and management within their departments. Some other departments have they have a business manager versus a finance professional. So the business manager is the one reconciling the P-cards and, and accounts payable, sending them on to the department. So it's a little different level of responsibility.
Okay, so in terms of these two words or phrases, there's New World and there's Enterprise Resource Program. What are those things and what do they have to do with each other?
Let me jump on that one. So New World is our current finance system. The ERP is replacing New World and ADP. So right now, the reports you're looking at, those are from New World. So they track all of our accounts.
All these, all these
Yeah, all these reports are coming from New World. And so all the departments get access into New World, they, they go in there and put information, they submit their, their accounts payable through there. ADP is the payroll side, which is the same thing, where all the accounts that, all the departments have access to it, but finance runs it from the core. And the ERP system is going to replace both New World and ADP, merge them into one, so they interact, get rid of manual processes between them, along with other manual processes between, so for instance, Gravity, don't believe Gravity will be needed once the new ERP is up and running. It, it'll print out those reports that are needed. Truck, it'll do that interaction with the treasurer system rather than the manual interactions that happen now, you know, importing information and, and confirming those things. Did that answer the
Oh, yeah, that pushed me way ahead of where I was.
The ERP system's name is
It's Tyler, it's Tyler ERP.
Enterprise Resource Program.
And it's made by a company named Tyler, which is what the police officers have in their cars.
It's Tyler Technologies.
Which is also over New World.
Yeah, actually, New World, so Tyler ended up buying New World out. And so Tyler actually owns New World as well. But it's a different, a whole different program.
Okay. And this, we're going to get economy of scale and lower price, right? That's, that's
It's a much more transparent and efficient process.
Well, I wouldn't say it's monopoly, there's a lot of other systems that we did look at in the process, we did a very rigorous review. One's got to watch out for them.
Oh, I found my sheet again. Any, any other questions? I think we're, I think we're good. I don't have a, I just stuffed everything there, I wasn't paying attention. What do we got for, the next meeting is tomorrow?
Tomorrow at ten AM for agenda briefing.
Oh, for, for following Tuesday?
Yep. Thank you very much for your time, thank you.
All right, well, we'll return.